What I see on the list. Perfect, thank you, that we've got the quorum by the list of everybody that's at the meeting. I don't necessarily have a chair report, other than to say, I've got a blood drive that's coming up at the end of the month, so I want everyone to pay attention to that out of the seat chest. But other than that, that's really all I've got to say. Are there any other committee members that want to report on any communications that they've had?
Yes, I would. This is Kermit here.
Go ahead.
I would like to report about the trails meeting coming up with the board on the eighth of the CCSD board. And I was looking for the map for the structural. Anyway, I'm gonna, do you want me to proceed with what I've got?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, got, there's been a notice on the, the paper, CCSD council of the sale of the small park, Vestpocket Park to the historical committee. I think it's a final sale. I'm not real sure. When I read it, I thought it was consideration of the memorandum agreement. In this Vestpocket Park, at one time, the Laurel Stewart had mentioned they were going to, you know, talk about putting a bridge across and there's a woman or a couple that has the lot adjacent to the Vestpocket Park that spans the creek and there's space work to put in. I kept, I've got a plan of the map of the Historical Society. Didn't have time to scan it. And it comes out that they've in this proposal here, let me show that right there. If you follow my finger here somewhere, it goes across the creek. There's a bridge across the creek as part of their actual historic master plan. If you can read that, I think it's backwards to you too. Anyway, that's their, their proposal. Now, that's fine. I'm glad they do it and stuff like that. But we also have come up with, and I've got two plans. We haven't had a lot of progress on our little team to put together. We're supposed to have somebody who has deep pockets that will help fund a preliminary study to get various proposals that we're going to put in and sort of help us glean out which one is the most likely to get funded. And it was a consultant set and then we would pick and choose from that. And probably the one that, I sent two plans to Carlos. Could you highlight those two plans? Leah sent you a couple of things to share since you're a host.
Yeah, I think she sent you an email for you to send me whatever you want to share. I haven't received anything.
Let me make sure I sent it. No, it sort of got lost here. Okay. Yeah, send. All right. I just sent you. Maybe. Send. You're now being sent, so let me just babble on a little further then. And then when you get them and you can post those two maps. Part of our proposal was to bring the, one of our proposals was to bring the, and most likely one to fly frankly, was to start with, was to bring it down from, a trail from Eaton, connect to the middle school and the low cost, future low cost housing possibly, down the valley, across Coverdale's land, across Tinn City and cross a bridge to West Street. And if that was easy to do, kind of when there was nothing, when the CCSD owned it. But I'm not sure in their present status if they will own it afterwards. Like, we're all kind of happy to see the jailhouse move down there and frankly, I'm too. And I wish the Historical Society the best, but I tried to talk to Melody Ko, I believe. And she's the president of the thing and she hasn't returned my calls, so I'm guessing she really didn't want to share anything at this time until they've closed on their deal with the CCSD. So we will probably attend this, but I guess that this is kind of information to everyone that we would like to reserve some space. The organization I've linked to that doesn't really, isn't really an organization yet. But then we aren't really funded for anything, so frankly, we got nothing right now except lots of talk that somebody's going to fund us for something. And that hasn't happened, so. But on the other hand, we, I don't want to sit down and just watch this thing fade away. Have you got those two maps, Carlos?
Yeah, yeah, I got them. If you want me to show them.
Just, just pop one up there and then we'll pop the other one up.
Okay.
Okay, that's, this is the proposals that will be, that's the major proposal there he's got right on the screen. That is the one starts up near Eaton, near the nursery, kind of go down and there encompasses three major parcels of other people's land naturally. Since I don't own any, you know, one loud house lot. But it goes up and connects to the middle school and then down. And we have no permission to cross Tinn City, but you can show we propose a bridge straight across that little Vestpocket Park into Bridge Street. So that was kind of the, one of the major connections. And like I said, probably the one that would garner favor among the primary opinion in my book, because there's one person that really has good control over all that area. And could you go back to the other one now, the other map that we have? I'll just show you this for information, but it's not germane to the one that. Okay, this is just our, for information, this is our other proposal where we go make two proposals down the highway. One on the, the east side is easy because it really has a sewer right away, all the way down it. That you can follow and it has a road that was there at one time, except up near the, where it connects to the highways, a little tricky. But then underneath the, the highway through the bridge span again. We just might take the bridge span alone as its own segment. At first, if we just decided to go with that, the rest of them are pretty much self, just crossing parcels land. I don't think there'd be much of a problem with it. One's still on, on Caltrans right away after the bridge and the other one is. But it looks like it'll have another, one of them will have a bridge span across to get across the creek for pedestrians. And it might be on the bridge, I don't know. Anyway, so let's go back to the other one, on the concerns, concerns of Vestpocket Park. So that one there, when you go down to look at it, the creek, at one time, apparently, coming down Burton Circle, Burton Drive rather, apparently, or somewhere in this whole proposition, the stagecoach ran down approximately where our trail is possibly and straight across the creek. There was no bridge at the time. And we were told that having a prior historical connection for crossing was important for the fishing game guys and the Corps of Engineers to allow another crossing now. And then so there is a historical connection. We still go across the bridge because there was at one time, that was a big wide draw apparently historically. Came down, washed out on this curve, took out part of the post office lot and sent, and all the rest of that, that area there widened out quite a bit. But it's since been all restored on both sides, big boulders form a channel there now. So there was a historical precedence in the crossing that ended after that. They restored the creek, creek banks. Anyway, the, the issue with the city or the CCSD is just the fact that we'd hate to have that plan precluded, even though it's just air at this time. So that's really all I've got to say. I don't think PROS has any interest in this because we don't have anything except the Vestpocket Park that's under, that would require any kind of recommendation. But so I guess my question is, how far can I go in a recommendation from PROS to cross that? To have this be a consideration?
All right. Kermit, Adolf. Just, just a comment. I had read a couple of days ago that part of their problem was is how the CCSD can actually sell the property to the Historical Society. Apparently that's kind of under review, I think probably with the county as to how they can do that transfer. And the other thing is, is that the Pocket Park then borders onto that property and I can't remember the fellow's name who owns it between the Historical Society property and the Pocket Park. Do you know what the status of that piece of property is?
Yeah, I do. That, I had talked to that guy some time ago. We actually don't touch his land. And that guy still parks tractors there and is apparently not interested at all in any kind of deal right now. He's alive and well and looks like another forty, fifty years to go. So you're probably not going to see that there, but that is a part of their plan is to occupy that land.
Yes. I know that twenty years ago, when we first moved here, there was a conflict they had, never wanted to take.
Yeah, that is this, this one. And you can see that they obviously do. That is in the, can't see both, but up here, right where my finger is, again, the magic finger, that's his land right there on the tip of my index finger.
Right.
They go right across it. So they're, they're certainly still wanting to get that in, probably eventually will.
Then one other question.
We don't, we don't go through that. We goes up the edge of the creek.
Another question is, is can you basically schedule a little walkthrough that you're talking about? If we can actually walk through that trail over that bridge?
Would love to, if we got somewhat of a funding thing, we, if we had any status at all. The, we haven't, there's supposed to be someone that's going to talk to the, the hardware store owner down there who knows him and see what he has a feeling of. Apparently one time he was in favor of this proposal going across with the Historical Society. So I don't think it's, it's foreign to him. And so it is a possibility, it could be the, and land right over. All we need is a ten foot corridor from through to satisfy that. So the question is, who would give that up?
Okay, thanks.
You, you, Harry?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and interject on what you were saying there, Kermit. Yeah, the owner of that property that's adjacent to the Pocket Park and in between the, the green space preserve. Remember the Warren family, I believe it's Forrest Warren. And even though he's up there in years, he's probably close to my age, is, is the family is, you know, is going to be inheriting that. Well, it's going to stay in the family. He doesn't want to let that property go. That's the property that had the house on it that burned down maybe twenty, twenty-five years ago. But he wants to keep it, like I say, in the family. So that's the situation as it is. And he's had some issues over the years with regard to the homeless people that staying in the Pocket Park. And then they throw their trash over on his side and, and use it as their private bathroom and that type of thing. And that seems to have been cleared up. It's not nearly as problematic as it used to be. But with regard to, like I said, that property, they are keeping it in the family, you know, between the Pocket Park and the green space area. So, thank you.
Okay. And if you look on the map of the one where the trail comes down from Eaton and goes across Tinn City, the park, the bridge itself is on that corner of land. If you look at that little square right crossing the creek, you'll see where the bridge is. And that's just me drawing a dot after looking at it. But that big open space to the left is the green space. And the, the dot, the bridge is on that parcel land that's triangular that the, the creek intersects it. That's the one that is the people in Los Angeles own. And it really has no commercial value, except unless you want to occupy across that creek there, which is important for us. But the parcel land with that immediately of the Vestpocket Park, just left of it with that structures on it, that's the, the other person that does not want to sell. The occupant has, you know, but we don't need that. We, we are on that centerpiece that, that apparently they were, they had one time were in favor of putting a bridge across there. Okay, so. Again, the question, do I, I'll probably just show up at the city council or the community, the district and make this statement, but we have no standing in anything because we don't really have anything to.
And are, yeah, does anybody else have any questions for Kermit besides maybe a thousand of them? Right? So you're going to go and make a presentation at the CCSD meeting?
Well, it's telecast, it's.
Yeah, but do you have a spot on the agenda or are you just making the statement during the public comment?
Public comment.
Yeah. And saying I'm coming from a group that doesn't have any standing or any membership or any money?
Pretty much.
Yeah, all right. Well, you can tell them I'm in favor of whatever you're doing, but good luck. Does anybody else have any questions for Kermit in regards to this wonderful idea?
Steve, I'm understanding, I'm understanding that we are not, Kermit is not representing PROS, is that correct?
No, he's on his own. Correct?
Go, go, go for it.
Yeah, yeah, go. All right. Does anybody else from the committee have anything they want to discuss that's shorter than fifteen minutes? All right. Seeing none, we're going to go to the executive official report. Kitty, you're in the audience. Tell us about the FFRP.
Good morning. FFRP, always a good time. Thanks for letting me fill you in on the boardwalk last month. This month, I have two bits of news on the boardwalk. One, we did not get the state grant, which is not horrendously surprising. And, but the other is, we did get approval from the county for the sequoet clearance, for the environmental clearance. So we, if we conform with all of our existing permits and permissions, then we can go ahead and do the project. And since we're planning to conform with all the permissions and restrictions, that's no problem. Weed clearing has stopped for the year. Plants are mostly done setting seed, so they're moving on to trail work with the exception of some hand clearing of ice plant. But I suppose for me, and we're planning for fall school programs to start. But the big news is, we were in the parade and it was a lot of fun. Our group was entirely organized and motivated by Brian Morgan, but we were very pleased to be there with CCSD. And we won the sweepstakes award, so we're very excited. Yes, we have a little trophy. Last time we got a ribbon, now we got a trophy next year, a check. So I'm going to escalate. So it was really fun. It was my first Pine Dorado. It was good to do something. Although there were weeds present, there was no weed pulling. So it was, it was just a fun time. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Steve. Still here.
And Adolf take over and Chase seek in between when it comes. Carlos, can Adolf take over?
Yeah, if we can't get ahold of Steve there. I see he's still there and he's unmuted, but I'm not sure if he's having some technical difficulties.
Yeah, I might.
Oh, he just went offline, so.
Yeah, it looked like he was in a car, so he might have lost cell coverage.
Okay, I guess then we probably ought to go down to the next, to the skate park report then.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Kitty, congratulations. So exciting and what a day, what a weekend. I want to thank Carlos because he was able to send us some great, great drone shots. And I get it because the kids are stoked. They got the best youth entry and there's really only four trophies and the rest are ribbons. And forgive me, I'm so dehydrated, so I get like ten words out and then I stop. But I can't tell you how proud they are. We were really excited to be in the parade and I hope many of you saw us. We tried to, of course, have a float that had impact and there's no way, I think we could come out as Skate Cambria without having a full ramp. And, and that was a ton of fun to build. Our Board of Directors, which is all kids, actually built that float. So to teach them how to use power tools and to share Taitham's credit and her son Chase, who is very good at carpentry work. They put in the effort of getting all of the skate light, all the lumber. But our, our students built our float and we're super proud of that. So on to numbers. We are now at five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the bank. And that, of course, will always include a number that has the district's one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in understanding in that number. But we continue to climb. You probably saw some changes out at the park. We've swapped out some banners because our theme is changing from we want to skate to we want to build to time to skate. So new banners went up right before Pine Dorado. We've also got a new thermometer on the park. That part of it is exciting because you'll see six fifty and we're at about eighty percent. So we're trying, of course, to climb to that number. I've been in contact with Ray. I know Carlos, between you, myself and Ray. More is coming your way and also, of course, to the board directly right around November as we hear more from the county and their exemptions and really understanding our numbers. So we know, of course, we're racing to six fifty, but we'll have a better understanding of what that entire nugget may look like. We have a fundraiser coming up in November. Gosh, you guys, I'm so sorry on my throat. It's going to be a reggae concert and we're working on those details right now. So hopefully we'll see you at one of the concerts. But we're working in conjunction with a local studio and excited to release those details very, very soon. So that'll be the next fundraiser, but of course you'll see us out there at rallies. And again, Kitty, congratulations. The parade was a tremendous amount of fun and to see our community back behind Pine Dorado. Also want to add, our kids worked all weekend in the food booths at Pine Dorado. They were actively, I was slinging nachos, our kids were slinging nachos, we were doing popcorn. I saw Jim out there actively, of course, and we're proud to, you know, get them involved in the community service beyond the park. And so you saw those students behind different food booths and game booths through the weekend. So thank you for the support as always. That's everything on Skate Cambria for the time being. If there's any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you, Julie.
Congratulations, Julie.
Hey.
The kids were going to be out there skating. We thought, oh, we don't have a chance at all. Wouldn't vote for the kids.
It was great. And I think both of us being on this call speaks to PROS, right? Because I mean, we're bringing the trophies, we're bringing the gold, guys. Kitty and I are bringing gold.
Very good. Thank you. Carlos, I guess you're next on board.
Hey, good morning, everybody. It's good to see all of you this morning on a warm day. Kudos to Julie and Kitty again for the nice trophies and great floats. That was a lot of fun. Our department was fully involved throughout the Pine Dorado festivities with parking at the rodeo grounds with full access to the restrooms downtown, to all the activities at the Vetsol with the follies and the Pine Dorado parades. And also we were busy, but overall, we all had fun and it looked like everything went well. A lot of people in town, which is great to see. I'll keep my report short. I just have three items that I'll let the commission know about. The first one is just a little update on the Vetsol and the termite treatment that's scheduled for the Vetsol. So we have awarded the contract for the Vetsol treatment to Breston Pest Control. And they are scheduled to do the treatment between Friday, October twenty-first and Thursday, October twenty-seventh. And we have already blocked off all those dates for the Vetsol, so there won't be any events being held at the Vetsol or the American Legion. So we are working closely with the American Legion to reschedule any events that they, they had. And also letting them know how to prep the building for the fumigation. That's kind of, at this point, the cost of that fumigation is thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Also wanted to.
Carlos, question. Who was the termite company that you gave the contract to? The name of the, of the termite company?
Yeah, it's Breston Pest Control.
You spell the.
Breston is spelled B-R-E-Z-D-E-N.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is just an update or maybe an FYI to the community, the Pross Commission on a fairly large ice plant removal project that's going to be happening on the Fiscalini Ranch starting next week on Monday, September twelfth. So we are planning on doing a large ice plant removal project there along the bluff trail. We are having a contractor do the pulling, loading up the ice plant and hauling that away. We're expecting that that work's going to take about one to two weeks. And during that work, portions of the bluff trail will be close to the public. We appreciate, obviously, FFRP. They are a great partner of ours and they are funding the work for this project. We're going to be working closely for the next couple of weeks, getting that project through, hopefully without any issues. And then the last item is just a little update on homeless encampments. So on August twenty-second, that was on a Monday, Caltrans, CHP and a contractor evicted and cleaned up two large homeless encampments on Highway One near Cambria Drive. If you've driven by Cambria Drive, you've probably seen those encampments over the last few months. Those were cleaned up. We were in contact with Caltrans for a number of months. We were on site before the cleanup. We were on site during the cleanup and we were on site after the cleanup and following that up with multiple visits to the area for about a week or two. Our main concern was, obviously with about ten individuals living in those areas, that they would find another spot to camp. And they may end up camping on, on any, or on CCSD adjoining properties. So that was the, the main focus of our being present there. So far, so good. We, we don't have any encampments that were established on any CCSD property surrounding that. The only encampment that we are currently working on is the one at the Pocket Park. We have two individuals there that have built another encampment there behind the property. And so we're currently working with the Sheriff Department to schedule a notice of eviction and working on scheduling a contractor to help us clean that up. That's my reporting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Carlos. Hey, I guess, comments, let's move on then. Go ahead, Harry.
Yeah, thank you, Adolf. I just want to ask Carlos, with regard to these two people that, the homeless people that are residing at the Pocket Park, are these folks that have been regulars in town or are these relatively new homeless people that are currently staying here?
No, these are two individuals that have been there for years. They have been reestablishing a camp there on a regular basis. And we've already cleaned up multiple encampments throughout the years there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I guess, I guess I can figure out who those are. Thank you.
Okay. Could I ask a question for Carlos?
Go ahead.
Carlos, I, I know the CCSD is paying for some of this stuff, but is there a way that we can hook in the grants? I mean, a lot of people, I bet you this state is, has grants that allow people to clean up near highways and stuff like that. Is there an effort for that going on?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's been, that's been sort of a troubled area for a long time, is trying to figure out how to, how to do cleanup. And where we can get the money for that. We've looked at grants that could help us with that. We have been sort of unsuccessful with that portion. A lot of grants are coming through the state, not necessarily for cleanup, but they're mostly going toward prevention, providing a place for people to live in, providing mental health, addiction services for them to be able to get out of the streets, which really makes sense. I mean, you're, you're trying to go for the root of the, of the issue. But as far as the cleanup, it's been, it's been really on Which really makes sense. I mean, you're, you're trying to go for the root of the, of the issue. Um but as far as the cleanup, it's been, it's been really on. Uh the property owners to be able to do the cleanup and it's, it's unfortunate. It's cost the district not only a lot of. A lot in time, but also a lot in money.
Are there any other comments?
Just to say thank you, Carlos, for your presence there for, you know, before, after and during the cleanup. That's, that was good.
I guess we haven't brought the public in. For any questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would want to?
Don't think any public's out there.
It looks like it. Okay, let's move on then to uh consent agenda. So consideration to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on August second.
Nick, but second, first or second, whatever.
It's your first. Have a second.
I'll do it. Let's get him off the table.
Okay, on favor, say aye please. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the uh motion is. Accepted.
Steve is back.
Sorry?
Steve is back if you want.
Oh, Steve is back.
If you, oh, he just disappeared soon as I said that.
He disappeared again, okay. Well, I guess that, that moves us on to uh.
Adolf, keep doing it. You're doing great. Run it.
Yeah, watch the road there, Steve. Okay, so, so the regular business we have this time and I'm, I'm not. Fully. Uh understanding of what we need to do, but that's discussion and consideration to review the current community park plan. And prioritize projects. Now, didn't we have?
At a committee.
A committee from the last, so the is this a committee ready to give us a report?
Actually, uh Carlos is gonna do the report for us, but we did meet and we did. Basically agree to whatever Carlos is going to present.
Yeah, so um I can uh, I can take the lead on this, help if you, if you want, uh and I can. I've got a short presentation. You also have the Ad Hoc Committee's report as part of the uh agenda packet. And I'll just go through that uh and point out some highlights from that. Uh so let me see if I can share my screen here. Yeah, so just uh providing the uh Post Commission uh with a little background on this project here. So uh as the report states, at the May twelve CCSD Board Meeting. Uh the Board of Directors provided some guidance to the Post Commission. Uh the Board of Directors asked the Post Commission to look at the current community park plan for the Fiscalini Ranch. And from that plan, prioritize the top three viable projects and then return to the board with uh their recommendations. So as mentioned last month, the Prost Commission assigned two uh Prost Commissioners to make an Ad Hoc Committee. And they consisted of Commissioner Renshaw and Johansson. Along with the Facilities and Resources Manager to provide some assistance for that. So we are providing uh a report uh on our findings. We met several times, exchanged quite a few emails and information. Uh and we are providing. Uh two lists for consideration. Uh we're also providing a couple of maps uh for overview of the project. And we're also providing a floor plan of the current restroom that is being looked at by the county. So the first list that the Ad Hoc Committee is providing grows is a list of viable projects. And those projects uh are um. Projects that the committee found that they required minimal cost. It could be implemented in a relative short period of time, uh are already being implemented in some way, but could be enhanced. And as you notice on your list, the uh recommendation number one for those viable projects is benches. Uh as the report mentions, uh the Facilities and Resources Staff has already built several benches in the past. Uh for the community park. Uh you can see in this pictures that uh. We were, we were able to fabricate uh several uh picnic style benches made out of uh pressure treated wood and then painted. Or uh extending the life of those benches. Uh they are at relatively low cost, about three hundred to five hundred dollar cost for the material. Uh those benches were used to replace the worn out benches on the dog park. Uh we were able to build three benches and you can see in the aerial picture here, we installed two in the large dog park area. And one in this small dog park area. We had a, a couple of additional benches that we uh fabricated and so we uh placed. Uh one on the outside of the dog park. Uh you can see there by the tree. To see if they would be used, to see what the reaction would be from the public. Uh and what we actually found was that shortly after we installed them, people were using them. Uh we have seen contractors. Uh take their lunch breaks out there. Uh we've seen people utilizing the trail system that take breaks there, so they're, they're very well used. And the recommendation from the Ad Hoc Committee is to possibly enhance uh with a few more uh picnic style benches out on the park. Uh suggestion number two is trails. So if you look at the uh. Current uh community park plan, you can see that there is a trail system. That meanders through the park and I'll just uh bring your attention to. This trail uh that circles around. The play fields and goes out to the informal active recreation area. It's sort of a loop trail at the community park. Uh the recommendation from the Ad Hoc Committee is that we uh do the following. Currently, we have. What is called the Santa Rosa Creek East Trail, which runs along the parking lot. Of the community park, goes along the right hand side along the Santa Rosa Creek and ends up out by the highway. The other committee is recommending that we establish uh that trail. By uh lightly mowing and hand grooming that trail to establish or delineate that trail. And that work can be done uh in-house with Facilities and Resources uh staff and also volunteers. And then the last recommendation for uh viable projects is trash cans. Um is the report mentions the Facilities and Resources Department. About eight years ago, we did a very large project on Main Street where we. Replaced uh all of the trash containers on Main Street uh with these really nice. Uh trash recycle planner boxes, but uh. The commercial concrete trash cans that uh replaced them, most of them were disposed of. Uh a few of those that were in nicer shape were actually saved and uh they were stored at the Facilities and Resources Yard. Uh so we are proposing that we uh could put those out for the public to use. And we actually have installed one out. To see what the public uh, if they would be used by the public and also to try to find. Uh what the best spot for those trash cans are. Uh the disposal of the trash from the trash cans can be accomplished by Facilities and Resources Staff or volunteers. Or it can also be accomplished by Mission Country Disposal uh at no charge. Uh that is part of their contract with CCSD and they're also already going to the dog park and emptying out the trash cans there. So those are the three viable projects that the other committee has discussed and is proposing for the Prost Commission. The other list uh that the Prost Commission is presenting to you is a larger list of. The major projects. These are the main amenities for the community park. And the Ad Hoc Committee didn't uh want to provide a uh large detail of each one of these projects, but rather. Uh we're just providing a description of each one of these projects, the size of the project and then the status of each one of these projects. But uh to facilitate discussion, uh the Ad Hoc Committee is uh prioritizing the top three projects on that list for discussion. And the number one project on the list is multi-use sports fields. As described in the description, these are. Uh uh unfenced uh sports fields that can accommodate uh soccer, softball, baseball. Other activities such as frisbee. Uh project number two is trail system. Uh this would be a meandering trail system. Uh ADA accessible with uh decomposed granite built. And then the last project is the native landscape and there was some discussion with the Ad Hoc Committee about why this would be number three. And that is that trees, uh ornamental landscape, anything that we plant up there is gonna take years to establish. And so that was the reasoning behind putting this as one of the top three projects to be able to establish that uh, that landscape out there. Uh that is the presentation. Uh I will leave it at that. I'll, I'll make a couple of additional points and then I will turn it off. To turn it over to Joyce or Kermit if Kermit if they want to add some additional notes to it. Uh so as I mentioned before, this is a report uh that is meant to be a starting point of discussion for, for the Prost Commission and. Uh the Prost Commission can uh after discussion, they can modify it. Uh they can remove some stuff. They can change the order of recommendations. If, if they wish to. Uh after the discussion, the Prost Commission can choose to send to the CCSD Board. Uh either only the list of viable projects or they can send both lists to the CCSD Board for consideration. Uh so I will stop sharing and I will turn it over to uh Joyce or Kermit if they'll have additional. Uh any additional info they want to share.
Actually, I'm in total agreement with uh what was presented. And I would definitely think the landscaping to get started on that is really important. Uh for the major project, but all the major projects are gonna take money, funding. And the viable projects are pretty viable. I mean, we can do those. But we really need funding for the major projects. That's the only uh thing that I have to add.
Okay, and, and I uh would like, could you go back to that uh previous picture where you did that loop? Around the existing drone picture of the, of the total park?
Yes, give me just a second, Kermit.
Okay, this is, is kind of the um. When I'm looking at this, it, we really, our park plan as such, that Carlos was, was illustrating. We, we've got about as close as we're probably gonna get on that, in my opinion, because we have um. I don't care much about this loop uh in the sense, I think we'd be better off extending it. All the way back and cutting off the backside encompassing that back area there, not just the. Uh playfield that we have, but crossing that one drainage thing, just to make it. A little bit more separation, a little bit uh uh. Actually, it could be like even a figure eight. But uh we're, we're basing it on the old plans in there and frankly, that's many years old. And uh we've pretty much implemented, but I don't know why we don't extend that loop out. It's a little more private. It's a little more. Uh uh. I don't know why this, this loop around here would be of value, because it's really not long enough for, for most people to encompass. A, a great deal of exercise and it'd be better if we took the major uh exercise equipment possibly and put it. On a, on a slightly longer trail. In the back, this one on the right where it goes across the creek. This is about, this is pretty much the existence of the commuter, commuter trail. Uh eight to ten foot wide multipurpose trail. Uh and we're probably gonna end up with a lot more electric bikes on there if we ever make a connection, which is the, the proposal. Ba- major bike corridor. I'm not sure it's really suitable for an exercise uh uh. Focus on it and along it as opposed to, which maybe get a little too crowded and, and not go there. The, we, we argued about where the benches would go and in my opinion, the landscaping and the benches would be best around the parking lot. Where it's accessible and uh as opposed to this wet area on the left that goes up in there. There's no reason to drag, you know. Cable or tube back there is no big deal, but it, it, it uh probably isn't going to be. Occupied as well as the area that's adjacent to the parking lot. So I'm not sure I'd waste a lot of money by dragging benches out there and it is labeled as a sort of a wet area and it. Like we'll see water again, but someday it might arrive. So I think the, the plan itself needs a little bit of, of upgrading and looking at it. Uh rather than to kind of try to comply with it too closely at this time, so.
Comment to uh going, making the trail go way back into, towards the highway one. Uh I think Carlos said in the EIR. That is prohibited, that we cannot do anything with that land that's behind the uh. Regular trail that we see on the map. I may be wrong about that. Carlos, do you want to make a comment on that?
Uh yeah, so um I think we're talking about uh two different sections of this trail. So this trail, as I mentioned before, is the Santa Rosa Creek East Trail. It actually goes from. Um as I mentioned, the parking lot, it actually goes along the creek and actually goes all the way to the highway. So the management plan and the environment, environmental impact report in our postal development permit. Uh doesn't include any improvements past the community park on this trail. So the area past the community park, which is a section running towards the highway, is unimproved uh trail. And it sort of makes sense that that is unimproved, uh mostly because uh there is a big issue with access. Across the highway for that portion of the trail. So we currently don't have access granted by Caltrans through the highway. There has been a lot of discussion about how to get from the east ranch to the west ranch, whether it's underneath the bridge. Whether it's creating a crosswalk, lights there, so that is a long-term plan that is gonna cost a lot of money. That is why that portion on the backside is not to remain unimproved. The portion on the community park has been designated as an improved area, which is DG based. ADA accessible. Uh the Ad Hoc Committee isn't recommending doing any of that at this point, because any. Improvement of ADA accessibility or decomposed granite would require a permit. Uh and cost of that trail would most likely exceed a hundred thousand dollars. That's why as, as part of a viable project at this point. It's only to delineate that trail uh for usage uh for the community. Hopefully that answers the question, Joyce.
Yes, thank you, Carlos.
And that's why you get the big money, Carlos. Thank you for that information.
And I'll, I'll stop sharing if, if you're all done with uh with that, Kermit.
Well, I'm, I'm still not, I, yeah, our proposal is gonna be to make that a change on that, that trail in there. I think most people in the community would like to see that area or. Have a more of a commuter's trail system that goes along with the uh outskirts of transportation systems. Rather than, than. You know, the planet one time was there, but you're getting an awful lot of traffic across there, that highway. Yes, that should be looked at. Yes, it, it should all be restudied because it, it is uh. It's a sta- a stemway through the area and along there. When that takes place, but you're, you're getting an awful lot of comments that like, would like to see that area improved, or that trail improved to a higher level than it is. So the, the hanging on to a planet certain, for the rest of its life, man, I don't know. Uh it, to me, it, it reserves looking at, because again, this loop trail is. I, I don't see its use. And I don't think it's, it's um. You know, you, we can do it because a trail like that can come and go pretty, pretty quick, pretty easy if it doesn't use, but. There's a place for exercise equipment, stuff like that. I would say we'd need a little bit longer and uh. We can spend the rest of our lives arguing that it doesn't comply with a piece of paper. I think every so often, paper needs to be updated.
Yeah, I, I would only add to that, Kermit. I think I agree with you on, on the sense that uh it may, may not be used. It may be used, the delineation of that loop. Uh but it's such a low cost and easy project implement that if it doesn't get used. But it's such a low cost and easy project implement that if it doesn't get used, then it'll, it'll easily sort of grow back and then we would know that it, it wasn't a successful project to, to put into place. But again, it's such a low cost project that it's worth a try. Are there any other comments?
Can you, can I make one? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I agree with Kermit that eventually we got to get across that piece of land that they don't want us to get across right now. But the board's looking for viable things to do right now and just making that little loop around the little area that we can already do it is going to add pressure to expanding the trail to the other area, which is eventually going to add to the pressure to get us underneath that bridge so we can have access and I think get us off the highway. So I, I love, I love the report. I love the fact that you came, I kept thinking that the projects were going to have to be bigger. Picnic tables, trash cans, trails. There's three projects. They're easy. We can do it and see if it works. So I'm for that. I appreciate Joyce and Kermit doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Just, just one comment. I guess if we, we did an exercise trail, I guess the old 10 station deal. You probably would just use that whole loop. If it's enough room, actually. Because I don't think they're going to jog that trail, but who knows? But I, I noticed at times you'll see somebody walking across that piece of property and they're kind of following that first trail and they do actually go to the highway. But that's kind of an ad hoc thing, I guess, for the hikers who are doing it.
Kermit, can I ask a question of Carlos? Was this part of the package your? I, I just see my agenda. I don't see this, your presentation as part of a packet. Do you have it?
Yeah, so the, we, we've included a fairly detailed packet on the agenda that includes the both lists, the viable projects. The list of the large projects, maps, and then the floor plan for the restroom. I just made this presentation, presentation to just highlight some of those points on that report.
Okay, I'll have to look for it. I just don't have it. As far as the trash cans, I think it's a great idea to take those old concrete guys and put them out there and see if they're going to be used, but I'm sure we can get a, a donor to sponsor, you know, the trippers, several of them there, especially if they're picked up by CCSD. I think the the Rotary had one over by, by the Cookie Crock there and they had their own ad hoc type trash can. They, if they were to support that, a tripper there or whatever they, they call it, realizing that the CCS or the garbage company will pick it up, pick up the trash out of there, they wouldn't need the volunteers. So I I'll reach out to some of them and see if we can do it. But after they get used, let's get somebody to put something nice out there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Commissioner Rogers. And just after that, so we, we CCSD received a fairly generous grant to replace those trippers. As part of that grant, I was involved with it very deep, very involved with it. And as part of that grant, when we wrote our proposal, we actually wrote the proposal to have additional trippers built for us. So we have in storage additional trippers. We have parks. We have the metal structures for them. So if, if there is a wish, if there is a need for a tripper out there, we can certainly do that. The only issue about trippers is maintenance. Obviously, they have planters. Beautify Cambria is the nonprofit that takes the lead on that and does a lot of the maintenance on the trippers. I don't know if they would be willing to do it on the east ranch, but we certainly have a nice volunteer group that's starting to form at the dog park. And so there's a lot of volunteers there that are very eager to help out and that might be another place to get volunteers. But I think for now, just the concrete trash cans, very low maintenance, that would, that would tell us whether that's a good project or not. Just, just a question, Carlos. How are we funding what you're doing now? I'm sorry, what funding?
What, what, what funding are you using now to do some of the things you've done? For example, the, the picnic tables and the other projects you're talking about?
Yeah, so the picnic tables are reported, I think it was last year when we built those, reported to our board and I think are reported to pros. That we had several projects throughout the years. We had material on site. And we were able to build those picnic benches at no cost, basically from leftover stuff. And that's why on the report, if there are additional benches that we want to build, the cost would be, and it will be between $300 and $500 for the benches.
Adolf, we have some hands up.
I, I can't see anybody, so. I think you have, you have Julie and then you have Joyce. And then eventually you want to go to the public for public comment as well.
Julie.
Oh, Julie, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, quick question. So I, I just want to understand the ad hoc committee, like who is the ad hoc committee on this? Because I, I would very much like to jump in on it, if that's possible. I, as it's no surprise, completely appreciate anything that is complementing our community in outdoor recreation and space. So I'd very much like to have a hand in that ad hoc committee. And my big question is where the money's coming from? And so I, I would really like to stay in that conversation. Who is the ad hoc committee right now? Is it Joyce and?
So the ad hoc committee is comprised of Commissioner Renshaw, Joyce and Commissioner Johansson Kermit. Those were the two that were selected at the last PROS meeting. There was a discussion about ex-official members being part of the ad hoc committee. I think Kitty was also eager to help out. Our legal counsel advised us that a ad hoc committee of PROS can't be formed with a ex-official member. So only PROS commissioners can be involved in that.
Well, then Joyce and Kermit, I guess you'll be hearing from me because I want to make sure that I, I have input on this.
I'm willing to.
Wait a minute.
Time, send me emails. I'm glad to get them. No phone call. Carlos, I checked what we got from the district and the information that you said was provided is not on there.
Right. I was going to bring that up as to.
Didn't get connected to what she sent out.
What? You didn't get what I sent out?
I think what was sent out was if I, if I understand it, I think Leah sent out just the agenda without any of the.
Yes, she did.
But on the website for the CSD under the PROS commission, I see the full agenda there.
Okay.
I think you just got the short version of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who, who else had a comment?
Well, I just want to talk to Julie here. The ad hoc committee is pretty much done with that phase. So what is it? What would you like to do? What, what, I mean, what are your concerns on that?
So with this, oh, sorry, what are you asking Julie?
I'm talking to Julie. I, I've got no problem with you, you disputing that. I mean, if you.
Oh, I don't think it's a dispute, Kermit. I think that I just, I'm trying to understand how these projects are rolling out and where the money's coming from. And please appreciate, the reason I'm asking is, is pretty transparent. We're privately fundraising an infrastructure right now.
Well, the, the biggest thing is they were really taken from lists that were on the plan, right, Carlos? We didn't even, we couldn't even choose anything that wasn't sort of already pre-manufactured. It, it wasn't a real imaginative session. It was kind of like maintain it into place, maintain the plan into place is what it amounts to. They're really Carlos, correct me if I'm wrong, but your, that, that list came from the plan itself, right?
Yeah, so the direction from the board is for the PROS commission to look at the community park plan.
Yeah, so it was choose one, two, three of the existing objects and there weren't very many objects to pick from. So we just essentially prioritized, and that was our, our task. That's why I was kind of a I wanted to enlarge the list, but it, the list was frozen to stone and you're asking really, you're chasing a money issue more so than the maintenance issue, right?
Well, I think I'm asking both. I mean, maintenance is inevitably part of after what's happening with the infrastructure. Excuse me. So, you know, picnic benches, a trail, I mean, I get it and, and I think that's awesome, Carlos. Because again, those benches are being made out of leftover materials. I, I'm, I'm trying to understand where the money's coming from. Because we've been saying and hearing over and over that there's no money, that there's no money. Excuse me. So.
Julie, for the major projects, we really have no money for that. And so, you know, it'll be up to CCSD to come up with some thoughts on how to get the money for the major projects. For the viable projects, Carlos thinks we can handle it within the budget we have. I think that's the way it sort of has played out.
So, so basically it's Carlos' budget that is providing the funds that have happened so far.
It's not only just my budget. I mean, as, as we mentioned in the report, you know, there are other folks that can help us. Mission Country can empty out the trash cans. So it's just a matter of us putting out those trash cans. So there's really no cost, no budget on our end. So there are projects that are very viable that can enhance the park now.
Adolf, I see John Wiggles hands up.
Okay. John, go ahead.
Good morning, all. I, I just want to add some clarification to the purpose of first looking at the community park plan and then prioritizing the projects. One of the things, the main, the main issue preventing us from further development of the community park was getting a restroom on the, on the, on the, on the ground there. We weren't allowed to do anything else before we established a parking lot and created a restroom. Now that that's in the works, we need to focus forward on what do you want the community park to be? What do you want to look, it to look like? Revisit the plan. If that plan is still good, great. But we need to prioritize how you want me to and the board first, since the board has to approve that. How do you want them to think about what the park looks like in the future? What are those different projects that you recommend taking on? Don't worry about the funding right now. One, we don't have a lot of funding. But we do have access to grants. We weren't able to apply for grants in the past because we didn't have a restroom in place yet. Now that that's in the works, we have the, the gates cracking open a little bit for us to, to apply for other grants for some of these projects. But just like the, the Prop 218 grant, we actually had a year and a half in advance. A lot of these grants come with very short notice lead times. And they expect us to have a plan ready to go. We, we can't react, you know, on a moment's notice and quickly put a plan together and it'd be, you know, at short notice. So purpose of this meeting is to, is to outline the priority of those projects. So we can start leaning forward to create some plans and then be ready to apply for grants when they come available. So hopefully that adds a little color to the purpose of having this discussion today.
Well, actually, we thought that we were supposed to follow the plan that was already presented. We spent a lot of money getting that plan together. And so we thought, you know, we should really follow what that plan had put out there for us. And it's been out in the community for a very long time. Maybe, maybe that's wrong. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's a 13-year-old plan, so it, it's a, it's a good time to revisit that.
Kermit, my, maybe we can move forward here by, I'll make a motion and a comment. The motion would be that we forward the short list of projects that could be reacted to immediately to the board, take a period. And then later on, we, I think the, the PROS is, the PROS is saying, the, the board is saying, PROS, give us major projects you want to have. So let's look at those that are already on the list and, and, and do that. But I believe with Kermit too, is that we shouldn't only be restricted by what can be done right now. So we, we need a, a, a plan. Probably another eight-year plan or something like four at least. And then if there's barriers, we, we resolve those barriers. So the board doesn't have time to deal with that. They're looking at us to make that plan. They didn't say only look at what we've got, but they were saying, hey, do something and get it to the board so that at least we can move forward. And I think Carlos would say, hey, I can do something here in the next few months. So I, I think that what, what was presented by Carlos as the short-term inexpensive plans be adopted and recommended by the board, this, this commission.
So, so we're actually talking about, when we first started this community park project, I recall we had phase one was to basically outline the park and get the grading done. And we had phase two, which I guess is the restroom. So what you're talking about really is phase three, is that correct?
My recommendation, I move that we present Carlos's presentation today as the first step toward it. And the next meeting, we look at that longer range list and decide whether we really need to stick within the confines of a 13-year-old plan or we, we modify that plan so that it, it's doable in less than a decade or something. But we're, we're being charged to do something that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, so.
Adolf, one member of the public has had their hand up for about 15 minutes waiting to comment. I don't know who can let that, let, it's Laura Schwartz. I don't know who can let them.
Just one comment and then we'll move on and we'll get Laura in there.
Terry had his hand up.
I understand. So I guess for the next meeting on the agenda, we ought to put the item on there as to looking at, I'll call it phase three and come up with some ideas that we want to get taken care of with in the next next period. And so Jim made a proposal, I guess. Do we want to go to that? Or let's take a comment from the person in the audience.
I think maybe we should go to the comment from the audience.
Okay, let's go ahead then. Guess he's ready to talk. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Commission. This is Laura Schwartz, Cambria resident. Yeah, we haven't been to a few of these meetings for a while and we wanted to jump, I wanted to jump back in and at least be aware of what the PROS commission is doing. And I wasn't sure how the hands up worked and there was no public comment time. So I, I just kind of wanted to see how all of this worked because I do intend to participate and maybe some other people also. So you guys are doing good work. I like the three requests that you're voting on. They seem very reasonable and it, it's a way to get things started. I know everybody works really hard on things. I had, I was looking at the, the community park printout. And the question, I had a couple of questions is first of all, as you move forward, how are you going to irrigate five acres of land? That, that's my, one of my main concerns. And then the other thing is what type of native plants are you going to be putting in? Because I, I'm very interested in that. We've seen things grown and planted and it's important to keep native things. So in third question, I've lost track of how much the restroom is costing. Thank you for listening and thank you for Kitty. Thank you very much for noticing that our hand was up.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I guess that we come back to the issue, I guess. Jim, can you restate your proposal?
Is that it?
Jim, Jim? Is he there?
Was I, I was muted.
Just go ahead and restate your, your, uh, motion that you wanted to make and then we'll go ahead and, and deal with that.
Uh, I move that we adopt the ad hoc committee's, uh, shortlist as described in Carlos Mendoza's presentation.
And I seconded it.
There you go.
You're seconded. Okay. So, uh, all in favor, uh, I guess, raise your hand or. Okay, since I can't see everybody, I guess we'll say that was in.
Yep.
Passed.
Yes.
Okay, but Jim, you had another second half to that, didn't you?
Well, what I'm saying is, uh, what I'm recommending is that for the next agenda item, item that's at the end of our agenda today, that we look more closely at the ad hoc committee's report. And put a priority on that, but also include some larger, long-term projects that we want to research over the next few months. We, it's, it shouldn't take, you know, a year or two to do all this. You know, some were constrained by certain things, but the things that were unconstrained that were in Carlos's report, we should prioritize first of all, and add those things that we want, like a figure eight. For instance, walkway. Uh, you know, that's, it might be problematic a little bit, but I don't think it's all that problematic. I mean, it's essentially open space and a tract around it to define it. It's not that tough, but.
I second the motion.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I'm just saying on, on the future agenda items, that's the way I would have it read.
So add that to the next agenda then.
Right.
Okay.
So just to clarify a little bit, uh, or maybe ask a question, Jim, are you asking the ad hoc committee to come back with that list of that information?
Yes, I, I, again, I don't, I haven't seen the, the presentation and I'd like to take a closer look at it. So the ad hoc committee should probably say, okay, now we've got these other things. Let's, um, the ad hoc committee could prioritize them, bring it back to the board, but as part of the, as part of their presentation, the, the commissioners or the, what are we? Commissioners, anyway, the commissioners here should be able to also throw in other things that the ad hoc committee didn't have. Joyce?
I think the ad hoc committee did their job like, uh, uh, Kermit said, and I think the committee as a whole should now look at what we recommended and see if we want to do something different. I don't think the ad hoc committee needs to meet again, do you, Kermit?
No, I agree with you. Let's, let's let this board become planners. And let's look at these plans and see which directions we want ahead and then go ahead and, and sort out the details when we sort of have a general direction, maybe parcel it out a little bit, but
I agree.
It really, uh, I agree with you, Jim. We just, we need to start looking at the future instead of sort of feeding off that same, uh, crummy paper plate that's kind of fallen soggy and, and lifeless in my opinion. So why don't we, uh, and, and frankly, we can go with this park plan proposal because that's one of the items I'm going to stick in there. And, and then permanent funding. Julie's got a good point. We, we got, we, we need, with the dreams, we need the bucks. And, uh, uh, we need to push for funding of the, of the parks.
Right. And then the plan has to be detailed enough so that, uh, when, when we write grants, we're shovel-ready and that's, that's an important part. And the law, some of the longer things are constrained by the, the plan, but for the long term, we should look at the, the plan itself, the 13-year plan.
So, so, uh, that would be our next agenda item. And, and I guess the ad hoc committee and Carlos can, I guess we can dig up what we had originally proposed when we talked about the community park.
You're finished, actually.
I understand, I understand. Just, just as, just, just as an agenda item, and we're really talking about is where we're going to go in the future. And I guess at some point in the past, we probably had this great idea of what we were going to do with the community park. And maybe we got to, if that does exist in some written form, we ought to bring that as, as a discussion item. When we, when we, uh, look at the, the future. So I'm not sure how we're going to do that, but maybe Carlos can dig up some old papers or how we originally proposed the community park and, and also what the ad hoc committee, I guess, was kind of discussing what might be the future of the park. Bring it together and we'll talk about it when we have the, uh, on our agenda.
Why, why don't we form our, uh, agenda? It, it's kind of parceled out from the last plan. Why don't we as a group, you know, that's one thing Carlos can do is we can, he can pick up the existing thing out of that plan and Kitty's there also to, you know, sort of shepherd that thing through and see where we need, but we need a list from that thing and then we just need another list. And then we need to decide if we're, uh, how to break it out and, and look at it or just leave it in a pile. But, um, the, the, uh, we're trying to, we could, we could try to do this a little in advance, like you're saying. And that's not unwise. But I'm not familiar with that document enough. You know, I, I've, I'm looking at the old park master plan. I'd rather pick and choose out of that because it's looser and has a ton more stuff than the specific, uh, uh, plan because the plan is so outdated and so specific. It was meant to be specific to stop the, the, the loose mavericks like us changing things as time went on in time because it was supposed to be frozen as protection for fiscal, fiscally ranch. But I think we ought to have the option of looking outside first and then coming back to that plan and see what, what we have to do if, if anything, to modify that plan to accommodate the list that we have built up.
Yes, I, I, I agree with that. I think that's probably the process that we should take.
Okay.
Anybody else have a comment?
I think you also have a member of the public that wants to, uh, make a comment, Michael Calderwood.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, good morning. Uh, great discussion. Just something to talk into your head, you know, these conversations uh, keep coming around. First, I think that the three suggestions are great. It'll sort of break the inertia that we found ourselves in, do, uh, do a few things that are easy to accomplish and add some value. So that's great. The larger issue that you might want to factor into as you look ahead is um, alternate ways to structure either pros or a more formalized parks and recreation organization slash practice that will help free us from some of the constraints that we're under now, fundraising, governance, all of those things and provide a more, um, I'll use the word professional for lack of a better one, uh, approach to managing this, uh, this growing and, and sort of difficult operation of maintaining our parks, our open space, uh, and planning for sensible, uh, growth or additions to what we already have. So my sense is that we are sort of bound by how we are today. So as you look to the future, not only what this park should be, but what this organization should be and how they can go about achieving the things that you're talking about doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tardle. Okay, are there any other comments?
Julie. Last comment. Thank you. I cannot agree with Michael more. There needs to be a different structure in order to set up the success of potentially a proper park and rec. Division, department, foundation, whatever we want to ultimately call it. Um, but a much more fluid way where there's a better understanding of how you're going out to the public and asking them what their needs are and what they want to do. And more importantly, how we can go after the grant process and funnel it. So, Michael, I just want to say thank you for your comments because I could not agree with you more. Thank you.
All right. Okay, are there any, any other comments?
Uh, yeah, just.
Go ahead.
I just, it sounds like we're ending up here. Uh, I don't know which way we're going. Uh, you know, I, I, it looks to me like we don't have a list of things to do next thing instead of put on the agenda. And I don't know, I guess we need a little bit more consideration of, of what the, the CCSD, no, you saw us getting, well, we, let's not worry about CCSD and they can watch us run if they want to. But, uh, and maybe Harry can want to change that, but.
Well, I think, can I say something, Kermit? I think, I think John gave us permission to move ahead and not to be tied down by, uh, the plan because he said if we can work on grants. So maybe as the commission as a whole can look at what we have as major projects and see if we want to do something totally different or add on or subtract or whatever.
Well, all right, then. And, and, and Adolf was trying to get us to a point where we were trying to do something in advance. So what is it we would do for the next meeting that you were trying to get us to do?
Yeah, so, so I guess maybe a couple of things. One is each of you probably have a, an idea of where we ought to go from where we are to where we want to be and what our, what our next, uh, project is. And, uh, to me, I guess that's also part of that is when we first talked about the community park and came up with these ideas of what the community park was going to be in the future, at that time, what we're really doing, I guess, is trying to establish now is we're here now, but where do we want to be, let's say, in this next year? And, uh, what would be the most important project in your mind? And if there are more than two or three projects, which of those would be prioritized? Since we've been commissioned now to, to do grants, I guess we're really talking about ultimately coming up with an idea and writing a grant to get money for that particular idea. So the question is, is, is I guess at the next meeting, come up with uh, having your knowledge of what you've done with the community park. Where do we go next? What is the next project?
Okay. Let me, let me raise my hand. The, then let's go back to what you had about the ad hoc committee. Let's form the ad hoc committee again. And have homework. And in, in two weeks, the ad hoc committee can meet to the same group. Joyce, I, and Carlos or just three board members. And everybody submit where they think we, what projects, how would we organize this thing? And let's see, is Julie still on us here? Julie, you, you, you're like, okay. And possibly put, let's, Joyce, I and Judy, Julie, get together on a committee, little ad hoc committee. And just, and start articulating from the group that, from the total pros group that's on the screens now. Where, what projects we ought to look at and where what direction should we be heading? And come back with some kind, we need homework because we've got 12 meetings a year. And we don't have enough time to get on this in an hour, whatever minutes we could churn on. So we need some discussions outside of this thing. So we ought to have some kind of little group that, that does something in the middle of the month rather than just wait. Or if we want to do real careful planning, meet again on a specific, all the whole board meet on a specific topic, topic for an hour, in two weeks. Uh, via the, uh, uh, Zoom meetings. We, we, we can't wait till next month and get together and loosely try to think we're going to flounder through something else. But Harry's got his hand up.
Yeah, Harry.
Thank you. I like Julie's idea of getting a little bit more public input uh, with regard to what projects folks out in the community would be interested in. Um, now how you get that information out there that you'd like more input, let's say at the next pros meeting. Uh, perhaps this could be mentioned at our next two board meetings that pros will be, at their next meeting, we'd like people to attend. And like I said, provide some of their suggestions as to what they would want in the future community park. Um, that's just one idea and perhaps that the R and I committee could mention something like that as well. Uh, I think that would be, uh, be really helpful moving forward because, uh, we're rarely, today we're fortunate to have two comments from the public from Laura and from, uh, Michael. And I see either Crosby or Laura want to speak again. But I think, uh, since it's a community park, we should have more people from the community being able, like I said, to provide input as to what they prefer. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And we still have another comment from the audience, is that correct?
Julie and Kitty have their hands up.
Okay, uh, let's go with, uh, Julie then, uh, Mr. Calderwood.
Just really quick, I, I just wanted to clarify, Kermit, I, I think there was a comment or clarification made by John earlier or Carlos, I apologize. Um, in regards to our participation, meeting Kitty and myself. So as ex officio members, we're not able to be on the ad hoc. I would love to, but we're not able to. And then I.
Can I weigh in on that?
Carlos said that he was, we were advised by legal counsel that ex officio members couldn't be involved.
Can I weigh in on that? They can participate, they just can't vote. If the, uh, if the ad hoc committee is meeting and they're discussing something, Julie can participate in the discussion. Right? That's not illegal. What she cannot do is vote on something that's going to move forward, but she's allowed to participate, no?
Sounds correct.
Yeah, right? I mean, it's America for God's sakes. They're not meeting in a closet. So yeah, I would, if they want to, I would suggest that that ad hoc committee get together and have a meeting. And Julie's going to be there. If Kitty wants to be there too, great, they can't vote, but they play. Thank you.
But Steve, I, I think that that decision was made because obviously the ad hoc committee has already met. So, I, I mean, I think I'm not going to speak for Kitty, I'll speak for myself. If they're meeting again, absolutely, we'd love that opportunity. But what I was understanding is that legal counsel advised different. So maybe, um, you can weigh back in on that. The second was our public did have a question and Carlos, if you'd be so kind to answer that to Laura. She asked about the price of the public restroom. So I think that's kind of been something that hasn't been readdressed, but if we could answer her question, that would be wonderful. And then lastly, I just want to, again, I'm struggling to talk this morning. I, I certainly apologize. Uh, I, I, I want to reiterate, I, I think that this discussion is wonderful. Like, I mean, I, the idea of getting a list is absolutely to Jim's point. I mean, we need to have some type of future thinking. But, um, I'm going to agree with Harry on this. I really think letting the public weigh in and becoming more active in our calls is super critical because I, I, I'm confident they're going to have some things to say about this. And I'm with Laura. I'm wondering where the water is going to come from in regards to the bigger picture of the plan. So I'm going to ask for those considerations in there as well. But please let me know on ad hoc. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, just one question. I, I, I guess really, uh, it kind of mirrors in the sense that you have the skate project. You proposed a skate project. You and others got active outside of pros, outside of the committee. Formed a little group. And you decided that you wanted to be involved in it. And in the sense, this is the same thing again. You can, Kitty could get together, Mr. Calderwood could get with you, Laura could do with you. And you could kind of stir it among yourselves and propose to pros what you would like to have.
Kitty also has a comment. Her hand was up.
Yes, I was, I was going to do that. So go ahead, Mr. Calderwood. Mr. Calderwood, go ahead. Or was it Laura? I'm not sure which.
So I think Kitty Conley had her hand up and then as far as the public. So I think Kitty Connolly had her hand up. And then as far as the public, are you Crossby and Laura Schwartz?
Okay, so Laura Schwartz. Okay, go ahead, this one. This one.
Sorry, I didn't mean to bump you out, Kitty. I just wanted to go back to the original idea of the pros committee. Pros is parks, recreation, and open space. And I really want to emphasize that because you're looking mostly now at parks and recreation. Don't forget the open space because we do have a lot of open space that's beautiful and that needs to be taken care of. So when your discussion, discussions are what pros is supposed to be doing, remember what the O is for. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Kitty had a question also. Go ahead, Kitty.
Yeah, hi. Well, Laura, I never forget the open space. So I think it would be helpful if, and I hate to ask you to do more work, Carlos, if when this next meeting, maybe have a rundown of the public comment, the the manner and degree of public comment that went into the community park plan when it was made, because this is not a plan that was developed by pros. This was a plan that was developed with intensive public comment. And also the constraints that are on that land because things, things have definitely changed and we're looking at it with contemporary eyes, but it is constrained by existing permits in the EIR. And if you are interested in opening up those sorts of issues, you're talking about years of planning and hundreds of thousands of dollars and it's probably possible to do most of the things that people are interested in within the existing constraints and permits. If you just are a little bit mindful of them when you come up with your idea. Personally, I'd love a pedestrian bridge over Highway One. That would be my number, number one thing I'd like to have, but that's, that's, that would be millions of dollars in years and nothing to show for it. So I, I think it would be nice to have some of that framework within which to have the discussion, not necessarily entirely constrained, but kind of a realistic discussion of things that are possible in even 10 years without enormous amount of change.
Thank you, Kitty. Amen. Amen.
Yes. It's not, it's not, it's not a brainstorming situation.
Absolutely.
We have land, we have constraints, we have
We have plans already.
We have plans, we have funding opportunities and funding opportunities that just don't exist. Things that we unlikely to fund like my, actually even better, a wildlife bridge across Highway One. I would like to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to briefly comment. I believe Julie asked the question, how much the restroom costs? If I, I think I'm correcting that, Julie. So I just want to mention that even though there were three options in the district, the board chose the least expensive option, which was $150,000. By the time all of the additional costs, like when you buy a car or a home or something like that, all the additional costs, I think it came to about $361,000 for the restroom. And I think Carlos can confirm that one where the
And it was public knowledge too, right? Very public, very public.
Okay, so that's been an interesting discussion. So I'm not sure we want to continue it.
I move that we you know, kind of adjourn here.
That's what I was going to do.
On everything we can do at the moment.
So let's, let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting and you all have homework, of course, so let's.
I, I have a suggestion.
Yes, go ahead.
If people have comments that we'd like to bring up next time to, for this long, like lists of stuff. We have a list of stuff. And the, we ought to submit it to who so it could be sent out to the pros commission without violating the Brown Act. How do we do that?
I don't know.
So we have no communication for a month. And I don't think, and we can't just chat among ourselves. So how do we, how do we speed this little process up by trying to organize it for a month?
We, we could maybe. I'm not sure if we have a local newspaper or not anymore, but we could say to the general public, we'd like some comments and the general public address it to the pros commission. Let it go that and they can read whatever letters they want to read and go on the whole process.
No, okay.
You know, you might consider posting something on Nextdoor or maybe on Cambria CA.
I don't know how to tell you that, but if somebody does that, so an idea of doing it that way.
With social media or maybe, I mean, I'm more than willing to contact Kathy Tanner. And like you said, the camera isn't what it used to be, but perhaps she can have a brief article with regard to the pros commission, you know, pursuing projects on the, on the ranch and requesting that members of the, you know, the community show up at the meeting and make their suggestions.
I think we'd better be prepared for that.
It may be a delusion, maybe just a few. Okay, are there any other comments?
Julie. Julie has her hand up.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. To Harry's point, the online paper Cambria CA, the district does write already as a correspondent to CambriaCA.org and there's over 800 subscribers to that paper online. So it's a wonderful resource to put an article out. I think to their ability to be able to have an understanding of what's being discussed and at least be able to chime in. Social media is definitely what they're reading. The three platforms and Cambria CA is where we're pushing almost all the information out on right now. Camera Currents, Nextdoor. And
Open Forum.
Open Forum, thank you, Cambria Open Forum.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that comment, are there any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting and.
So make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, Carlos, for the great presentation you made. Look great.
No worries. Thanks for the help, Joyce and Fred. Appreciate it.
I didn't do much, but bitch.
Take care, everybody.
You too.
Thanks, everyone.